So we called this board meeting, Nelson County Board of Educational Order, on November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, at approximately five thirty-four P M. If you would, please join Abel McKinnon. Where are you, Abel? Oh, there he is. And Gracie Phinaman. Did I say that right, Gracie? Phinaman? Boston kindergarten students who are here with us as they lead us in the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and manly, and innocent for all.
So first item that we have on our board agenda, item number two, the annual board planning process. Superintendent Bradley?
So we are coming near the end of our annual planning calendar. We are here in Boston tonight. We'll be focusing on some of the work that's continued to emerge over the past year with facility planning, along with a number of other conversations. And our last meeting of the year will be December thirteenth at the New Haven School. And much of tonight's conversations will carry forward into December. We'll also be working to set the board calendar for the two thousand twenty-three calendar year as well.
Superintendent Bradley? Moving on into item three, Uniting People, Place, and Purpose. Three A is student empowerment. Ms. Henderson and Ms. Chenault.
Good evening. So we are super excited to be able to come here tonight to celebrate the new STEAM pathway for our students at Boston. And so as you came in, I hope that you were able to go around and explore the different stations that were set up by the students and presented by the students. But if you didn't have a chance, we have the teacher, Ms. Jamie Chenault, here to explain a little bit more about what takes place in the STEAM lab here at Boston School.
Awesome. So first of all, thank you guys for coming out. We, as you can imagine, the kids, I walked in on the first day of STEAM and they're like, "Does this have anything to do with the train?" And I'm like, "Nope, I didn't choo-choo here. I'm not a steam engine." Like, nothing like that. So we had to figure out what STEAM was all about. And so in order to do that, we learned a song together. And so we're going to, our pre-pay group, five students are going to come up and perform that song for you. And then I'll finish up just a quick synopsis of what STEAM is really all about here in Boston. So if I can have my fifth graders come up. Everett, if you'll come up. Gracie, come on up, so we can sing our STEAM song. Jackson, you want to come up? Preston? Nicholas, come on up, buddy. Abel, come on. I don't have to say your name. You know you're in there. So the STEAM song is something that we, if we're not, like, in a rush, that we try to sing at the beginning of every class period that I am with them.
All right. We're ready. And that's the video for the videos.
On every vacation out of rural home, there's someone like you who reunited the family to make up for lost time.
So I was able to give a little introduction as to what STEAM actually stood for based on that song. But when I was hired on here, I came in with the mindset of, I wanted to make sure that creation was over consumption. Our kids nowadays are consuming so much media, but how much are we actually creating? And so with that focus, I broke it down into four questions that I focus on when I go into the kids' room. And those would be, what would I like to explore? And then based on that, who am I? And then what am I going to do if I face challenges? And how can I share what I know? So as you saw throughout the stations, the kids anywhere from an entrepreneur class raising money for Park Town here in Boston, or Norton Children's Hospital, the kids anywhere from math to creating stop-motion animation that they can use in science class to show what the states of matter. There's so many things that we can do that goes beyond paper and pencil in our classroom, or just consuming things. And so that's kind of a glimpse of what STEAM is all about. Is that okay? Okay.
Thank you, Jamie. And thank you for all of our STEAM kiddos that are here. I know that even just in the little bit of time that I spent at the stations, I learned something. So I appreciate that because I can see what a bright future that you all have. And I love that you are creative in designing. And don't lose that interest. Don't lose that spark that you have within yourself. So thank you all. And I hope, if you guys didn't have a chance, they're not going to be staying. They are going to be leaving. But I hope that you did have a chance to go around and explore and see. And if not, touch base with Ms. Chenault and see the great things that are happening here at Boston.
Thank you to Henderson and Ms. Chenault. And also thank you to, I'm trying to remember, it's Aubrey and Piper, and there's Nicholas and, was it Gracie and Abel? And Nicholas was the one doing the colors down there. I still have not figured out what the pattern is to the colors. You're going to have to teach me a little more on that one. And then also the stop motion. If you all have not seen or had the chance to see the stop motion work those students are doing, some of it could put Gumby to shame. And you have to be a little bit on up in years, I guess. Is that the right way to say it? To remember what Gumby was? Thank you all. Moving on into item three B, the UP Foundation update. Ms. Rowan.
Hello. Good evening. I've got a tough act to follow after watching them. Kind of makes me nervous. But here tonight, we are here to celebrate our event that the UP Foundation put on two weeks ago, November the first. For those of you that do not know what the UP Foundation is, it is a nonprofit organization that supports Nelson County students and schools. So we hosted our first UP Foundation campaign kickoff. And we had three initiatives that evening, and that was to raise money to support early literacy, dual credit credentialing, and also to fund program expansion and development. That evening, we took that opportunity to not only raise money, but to celebrate our first five Next Gen Award winners. And those students were recognized for the involvement that they do in their community, not just their schools. So they were recognized for their leadership and the impact that they have on their community. We also had a silent auction where we raised almost five thousand dollars. A lot of those items were donated by staff across the district and also businesses. And then the UP Center created some pretty talented pieces that sold for a lot of money. So we're pretty excited to showcase their gifts and talents that the UP Center does. We also raised, we announced that night, we raised two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and I think that deserved a round of applause because that exceeded our expectations for that night. And then just Monday, Ms. Laura Arnold met with Wes Finko and Diana Gagney. And I am proud to announce that Wes Finko has pledged twenty-five thousand dollars in addition to that. So total, we are over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that's going to support our students here in our district. But I also want to celebrate the number of people we had that night. We had almost three hundred in attendance, which, if you can see, as you saw in that picture, it was, the room was full. And we had twenty-nine community partners there representing. But out of those twenty-nine partners that sponsored a table, nine of those were businesses and industry people that were new to Nelson County schools. So I thought that was pretty awesome. And out of the nine that were there that did not know really anything about Nelson County, they just heard that we were getting ready to expand our programs and they wanted to know what it was, six of those nine have already reached out and wanting to know how they can be more involved. What resources do we need? So I think we planted a lot of seeds. In addition to raising the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we definitely planted a lot of seeds. We promoted our students. We promoted our vision. And to me, that is the power of uniting people, place, and purpose. So, thank you.
Ms. Rowan? So those of us that have been actively involved in the schools, it's okay. You know, we recognize the Rowan name because of your tour, Beta, and many other activities, and your daughter and all her charitable work that she does as well. I think now we know where they all get it from. Thank you for all of your efforts.
I wanted to say this because that night, Mr. Bradley recognized Laura and myself for the work that we did. But I have to say that it took a team effort. Without our media and our technology team and the staff that supported the event, it would not have been possible. So it was not just me, and it wasn't just Laura. It was Sarah Rogers was supposed to attend the event, and they pulled her to actually work it. So I mean, there's just so many people, and I think that it's teamwork.
Thank you for Rowan. Before we go on into the guest comments, I'd forgotten at the very beginning to mention, Mr. Dickerson is joining us remotely. He is out of town on a work assignment, but he is up on this screen over on this side that we can see, and so that he can also see all that's going on tonight. Just want to make, just want to make sure everybody knew that Mr. Dickerson was joining remotely. So moving on into item four A, guest comments. The guest comment policy, "Thank you for attending our Nelson County School Board meeting. Any person wishing to address the board may do so by following these rules. Individuals representing themselves are limited to three minutes. Individuals representing a group are limited to five minutes." I would ask that you please step forward to the mic at the center court. State your name and address, and if you represent a group, state the name of the group you are representing. Looks like there are five who have signed up here. The first on the list is Kim Wright.
Kim Wright, Clear Creek Drive, Boston. Month after month, parents and taxpayers come to school board meetings and sit for hours listening to numbers and looking at fancy graphics, so mostly admin staffers can pat themselves on the back and gaslight the citizens into thinking all is well. Tonight, I brought some numbers and graphics. On November eighth, the people of Nelson County spoke loud and clear. By sixty-six percent, that's two-thirds, the citizens in District One and Four rejected the vision of this misguided board. They chose new leadership because our children deserve better. Our children deserve better than the report card they just got from the Kentucky Department of Ed. Let's review the numbers. Yes, we know the numbers, our ABC grades were replaced this year by much less specific color graphs. But let's just reimagine them back to the good old ABC grades. As are blue, Bs are green, Cs are yellow, Ds are orange, Fs are red. The report card released last month for the eleven Nelson County schools shows zero As, zero Bs, one C, seven Bs, and three Fs. Wow. Not acceptable. There is no defending this. Oh, but COVID, no. This board can't use that excuse. Every system in the state had to overcome the COVID disruptions. Every system operated under the exact same Department of Ed, rules, regulations, policies. So let's look at surrounding counties. Surely their grades were just as bad, right? Wrong. Parks? Parks County had four Cs and no Fs. Bullock County had one A, two Bs, twelve Cs, six Bs, and no Fs. Harbin County had two Bs, twelve Cs, six Bs, and no Fs. Spencer County had four Cs and no Fs. LaRue County had three As, a C, and no Fs. Washington County had one A, one B, three Cs, and no Fs. So the voters have spoken. They say you failed. The Kentucky Department of Ed has spoken. You failed. So the question is not, how do we change the measurement so it looks like we're doing great, as suggested by the superintendent last month? The question is, how do you begin actually educating the students so they earn As and Bs on the state report card? That's the most important question. Let's stop talking about buildings and salaries and jobs and expanding the pre-pay programs when our present students are failing. It's time to use the F word, failing. One C, seven Bs, three Fs is failing. We need twenty-five meetings on academics. That's responsibility number one for the board. Educating, not entertaining or employing our children. Educating.
Next on the list is Debbie Bocheski, representing herself.
Hi. Excuse me. Hi, Debbie Bocheski, Bloomfield. I'm representing myself tonight. Boy, those kids that did the pledge of allegiance, I see them as being great board members in the future, as they're not afraid to use the microphone and speak up. That was very refreshing. I was at the LPC meeting last night, and other than Ms. Bowling, I'm kind of disappointed that the rest of the board wasn't there. There's always a lot of information shared at those meetings, and it really gives you a background of what's going on with the future of the community campus plan. One thing that really stuck out in my mind last night was that the new buildings added to both Thomas Nelson and Nelson County campus, because they are considered a renovation and an addition rather than a new school, which to me, a separate building attached by a walkway, in my mind, is a new building. But because of that little loophole, the district is no longer planning on building them to the specific codes of making them a severe weather shelter, because it will save some money. From what I was able to find, a building that holds approximately seven hundred and fifty students, the additional cost to make it a severe weather shelter is one to one and a half million dollars. That's peanuts in the long-term scale of this project. And another thing, if the building is a severe weather shelter, typically it's made in a different manner that makes them more energy efficient, which I know is one of the goals for the district as well. So just a little statistics. Every year, Kentucky has approximately twenty-two tornadoes that strike down. Of course, they're not all of the level that we witnessed this past December in Dawson Creek and Mayfield, but there's still twenty-two tornadoes a year that strike down in Kentucky. When those tornadoes struck Mayfield, guess where the community went? The school. The school ended up being the triage center. It ended up being the safety net. It ended up being the supply building for the residents. It was their safe place to go. We need our schools to be the safe place for our students. We're always concerned about active shooters, but that's not the only reason our buildings need to be safe. They need to be safe from the weather. Statistically, most tornadoes happen between three P M. and nine P M. Our students are still at school at three P M. There's tons of students at school until approximately seven P M. If they are at practice, they need to know they are in a safe place. I urge you to make our schools a safe place for weather. Thank you.
Next on the list is Jessica Ho, also representing herself.
Hi, I'm Jessica Ho, and I'm a resident of Cox's Creek. I am a graduate of Nelson County High School, class of two thousand nine, and I just wanted to kind of discuss the topic of test scores, because that seems to be pretty talked about right now. So I never scored distinguished on any state standardized test. By the time I was a senior in high school, I had taken the ACT four times and received the same score, all four times. It was about two points past the point I needed to be accepted into college. To get accepted into my graduate program, I had to take the GRE, which is another standardized test on subjects I hadn't seen since seventh grade and frankly had nothing to do with my major. I scored three points above what was required. Since two thousand sixteen, I've sat through many interviews for different jobs. And here are some things that were never asked. What did you get on your ACT? What was your DPA? How well are you at taking tests? Which is poorly, if you haven't caught my drift. However, there are two examples of something that was asked in some form or fashion. What are the two most significant achievements you've had in your last job? And what ways have you grown your skill set or experience in your last role? In order for students to be prepared to answer questions like this, we must provide them with the experiences that will help shape their future. The community campus plan provides more opportunities than our current setup, which only adds to the experiences our students can discuss in future job interviews. So I want to thank the Nelson County Schools for the direction it has taken to ensure every student has the opportunity to explore their passions. Thank you for thinking outside of the box and seeing that success can be measured by more than just a standardized test. Thank you for allowing students to see that college is not the only opportunity after high school, with the amazing workforce labs across our community. Lastly, thank you for fighting to end the standardized education status quo that I grew up in. I'm hopeful that we can continue down this path peacefully. I challenge the incoming board members to have an open mind about the positive changes that are occurring in our district, the positive changes that I hope my child will be able to benefit from. Thank you.
Next on the list is Julie Filiatro, also representing herself.
My name is Julie Filiatro. I'm actually a resident of Springfield, Kentucky. I'm a current parent and former BTO president for Cox's Creek Elementary and a parent of a student at Bloomfield Middle. Our family moved out of the district in two thousand nineteen, but chose to keep our children here because of the relationships that we had built at Cox's Creek and Thomas Nelson High School. In two thousand seventeen, when my kids were in kindergarten and second grade, they began running at Thomas Nelson, and it has been one of the best things for them. My kids have some very close friends at Thomas Nelson, and even relationships with some, sorry, with some graduates, and I would not want it any other way. They are good kids. The high schoolers are good kids, and my kids look up to them. I know there's a lot of talk about the younger kids engaging with older kids, but I just want to be clear that our experience has been nothing but great, and I am thankful for the high schoolers that give the younger kids time and are strong leaders for them. And I think that they need to be applauded. Thank you.
Last on the list is, last on the list is Daniel Greenhill, also representing himself.
Daniel Greenhill, New Haven, two seventy-two eighty heels from. I'd just like to get with you guys about the test, because that in a lot of ways is the only metrics that parents and then also people from outside the county have to gauge what the school systems are. And as a builder, I'm here to tell you, the scores are tremendously important to anyone looking at the district as a whole as to somewhere they want to be. So to just kind of push those off and say they're not really relevant is irresponsible, in my opinion, and just ludicrous. People, they have no other gauge. What, how else are they supposed to gauge the, the school district other than that metric? There's got to be some kind of metric. They don't, they're not going to know about your little metric y'all are trying to keep in-house. They're coming from out of town, out of state, and it's a huge difference between whether they move to Nelson County, or they move to Bullock County, or some other county, Odell County, or somewhere at Spencer County. It's a big difference. So also, I want to get into the election. And I want to thank Ashley, I want to thank Adam, both for putting themselves out there and running campaigns. And it's a big deal. They bring a lot of value. Their losses bring a value to the conversation, because their candidacies, they stood for something to continue the path that we're going on now with these mergers and all that. And so people had the choice to go for an Ashley or an Adam, but they chose big time. I mean, not just a little bit. You could take every one of them in Amanda's District Four, and she beats every one of them. You take David in District One, you take Adam in District Two, and he still wins. So this ain't even a close discussion about where the people of Nelson County want to go. These are two significantly different districts. This isn't a New Haven District and a Bloomfield District. You say, oh, they're going to both lose something. So, you know, those two districts would kind of make sense if they would vote the same way. Amanda's District loses nothing, but the people of that district still overwhelmingly, not even closely, overwhelmingly chose to go a different path. They don't want this crap, guys. It's done. They don't want it. Y'all need to give up on it. It's over. So you got to think, you got to think it's through. What's the end result here? At the end of the day, this ain't going to happen. You may try to wish it to happen, you may want it to happen, but the people in Nelson County are speaking, and they're speaking loudly. They don't want this, and they ain't going to put up with it. At the end of the day, it just ain't going to happen. You're spending a lot of county's money unnecessarily for a project that ain't going to happen. That's all I got to say.
Moving on into item number five, Monthly Consent Agenda. It consists of A, the monthly financial report, B, leaves of absence, C, minutes from previous meeting, D, fundraiser requests, and E, overnight out-of-state field trip requests, which is a Thomas Nelson High School data and Thomas Nelson High School basketball. All of these were part of our board meeting packet that we've had the chance to review. Are there any questions about any of the items? Okay, then I would need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Motion by Ms. Bowling? Second by Ms. Hollingshead? All in favor? Aye. Mr. Dickerson, which way? You also were an aye, okay. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes 5-0. Moving on into 6A, Personnel Notifications. There is no action required on this. This is an informational paper that the superintendent provides to the board each month. Moving on into 6B, School Calendar Committee, Mr. Martin.
Good evening. So, I come before you to finalize our conversation with our School Calendar Committee. We have reached a recommendation, and we do want to propose to the Nelson County Board of Education for you guys to potentially adopt. I really just want to summarize some takeaways from that conversation. So, the school calendar that was discussed at the committee really resembles what we're currently experiencing for the most part. Some of the highlights in terms of the key takeaways are listed here. We are looking to pursue a 170-day instructional day calendar. We do, and really the key conversation that we kept talking about with the county committee was the allocation of backpack days, and we talked about that last meeting. We'd like to have some a lot before, and then also some sprinkled throughout, but there's obviously a balance there. So, we found this model to have kind of that best solution with some at the beginning and then some throughout. Essentially, there would be five staff planning days prior to the first day of school, not counting the community tables. And that blue August 7th day, that would be a day where local schools could be able to, they could place that there, or they could possibly place that in July, but that would be one of the five days that they would have without students in the building. And then we also have backpack days on after fall break, after winter break, and we couldn't get one after spring break just based on the allocation discussion. And then the other topic was the placement of the second round of community tables. Currently, we're experiencing those at the 1st of February. We felt like really that the purpose of those sessions, it felt better at the back end of February, it was going to allow us more time to allow some of the transitional conversations to occur by having another month before those took place. So, this is the recommendation from the calendar committee. Any questions that you guys may have, but I ask to adopt this as presented.
Just a comment, I want to thank you for the leadership that you had in facilitating our meetings. They were very efficient, which I appreciate. You did a good job at facilitating the conversation, asking engaging questions so that we were really thinking about what we were voting to approve to optimize our instructional periods, and talking with some of the teachers leading into the conversations, which he had us go out and do to make sure we were engaging with our community. Just a challenge to make sure that those backpack days, especially for those middle schools where we have teachers that are the only subject experts in those schools, make sure we're giving opportunities to collaborate across their subject areas and not just specifically in their schools. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Ashley.
Mr. Martin, and I want to make sure that I'm looking at the January, February, March stretch there correctly, because I had had a comment from one of the classified staff. They had shot me a note talking about in the past, there was a long stretch between Martin Luther King Day, which is mid-January, and spring break with not, other than if there was a snow day, with not any days of non-instruction. And their comment was sometimes they could kind of send students get a little bit squirrely in that long stretch, and even the staff at times, as that classified person was sharing, that they would also kind of feel that strain. But am I right, am I seeing that there is about five weeks into it, two back-to-back days of no instruction that would be in the February, beginning of March?
Right. So, first off, we brought that same conversation over to the county committee, the teachers, obviously in their presence there kind of reiterated that. But yeah, so, that was kind of the discussion around the placement of the community tables as well. So, that February 29th and March 1st would be non-instructional days, and that's open times for families and students to come in to meet with their Karen Connect leader for a 15 to 30-minute session potentially. So, those would be non-instructional days. And it felt like there was, you know, kind of a break in there before the spring break hits, so.
It sounds like some of the same conversation that came up in that committee.
Yeah, we also had discussed that the backpack days, as you see, like, the one in October is after fall break. We felt that that would be easier for parents if they're coming back from a break and finding childcare if that were to affect them. So, we did consider things like that as well.
It looks very sim, I mean, for the most part, it looks very similar to us trying to get on a standardized type of approach. I know last year that was one of the things on the county committee that we heard quite a bit of is, whatever way we go, let's at least start getting on a similar approach every year.
Correct. We typically have a few snow days in there, so.
Yes, but actually we didn't have snow days, just have to kick it before they catch down.
So, part of the, right, part of the challenge though, in terms of the allocation, ultimately the things we want to hear, like, we want several staff planning days before the school year starts, we also want lots of instructional days, we also want days sprinkled throughout, and then we want to be out before Memorial Day. There's a lot of constraints on 186-day teacher contract. So, ultimately, you could steal a day here or there, and then there's also ripple effects of that placement. So, it's really like, where do we find the most value? It's really the question we kept coming back to in terms of allocation, and that question really drove the process.
Did you say 40 days, Ms. Berry?
I'm looking at January and February, if my eyesight is okay.
I want to make sure I heard, you said 40?
Well, if you take 5, 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, 35, 36, 37, is that not right? Five days in a school week.
Yeah, I'm only seeing 5, 10, 15, 20, 25, about 30 days there.
You don't want to spill all the purple days.
Yeah, between Martin Luther King and the February 20, it's the 28th, 29th, which is a community table day, no instruction. Well, she's kind of up there, Mr. Martin. So, was there any conversation about in January, the end of the second quarter being after the holidays? I know that's always been something that's typically been a conversation point.
Yeah, I think in terms of the allocation of the semester conversation, we did reference that in terms of when that should end. Again, it was more along the lines of equity among the allocation of days in Semester One and Semester Two. Essentially, under the current model, if you ended Semester One, I guess essentially December 15th, then that would put eight days on the other side of the semester, which essentially would unbalance the bias.
Yeah, I know that's also always been the other part of the conversation, is trying to make quarters and semesters be roughly equal, especially for the high school and the middle school ages.
Correct.
Okay. No, please don't. Do we have any other questions? Ms. Hollingshead, I mean, it sounds like that from your perspective on the committee, I mean, this was a pretty straightforward.
We had three options available to us, that we discussed all of them, and this was the middle of the line. It felt, we felt like it gave us all of the things that we had said were the priorities and improved a little bit on what we had had last year or this year.
Mr. Dickerson, I want to make sure that we don't miss out on you if there's anything coming to your mind or your. Okay. If there aren't any other questions for Mr. Martin, then I would need a motion, let me go back to the other slide here. I would need a motion to approve the 2023-2024 school calendar as presented. Motion by Ms. Berry?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Hollingshead? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Martin, and Ms. Hollingshead, also thank you for your participation on that. Item 6C, The Reach Contract, Ms. Tucker.
Good evening. Tonight, I come to you with the Reach Contract, much like the annual contracts that we have with Astra, Communicare, JP Intermissions. The Reach Agency has reached out, I've connected with them multiple times. What I appreciate about Reach is their ability to not only support our students with individual wellbeing and mental health services, but also supporting our leaders and thinking through what it looks like to provide that wraparound support for students who that need might arise in a classroom setting as well as families. So, this is a great agency to partner with as we think about being proactive in providing additional mental health and wellbeing services for our students. So, tonight, I'm just asking for your approval of that contract.
I assume, and I think in some of the past conversations you've shared, that most of the time these partnerships with outside organizations, that they deal with billing through either families, personal and private insurance, or it might be Medicaid or something like that?
They do. So, this is to no expense of the Nelson County Schools. This would be provided through individual insurances or family coverage.
Do we have any other questions? Okay, so then I would need a motion to approve the Reach Contract as presented. Okay, motion by Mr. Dickerson, second by Ms. Bowling. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker. Item 6D, Chief Financial Officer Performance Bond, Ms. Rogers.
Hello, good evening. I'm just here tonight to ask you to approve the bond that is required for every CFO. We had to wait until Amy was not with the district anymore to apply for my bond. Let's just ensure that everybody's protected.
Usually, it's a fidelity bond. So, every year we pass a fidelity bond. It's also called a performance bond. And in theory, and to summarize in brief, if Jessica has corrupted insurance the district.
I'm not. They were willing to insure me, so.
And I think what you heard too, the only reason that we're seeing this now versus, I think normally it's in the summertime, is because of the timing of Ms. Owens officially no longer being the CFO.
Yes, we had to wait until we could, it's a catch 2020, because it's like, we had to wait until she was off the bank account, but it had to be bonded before it could be on the bank account, so we had to wait. And the amount of the bond is $400,000. It's the same that you had.
Do we have any other questions? Okay, so then I would need a motion to approve the performance bond for Jessica Rogers for the '22 through '23 school year as presented. Motion by Ms. Berry? Second by Ms. Bowling? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Ms. Rogers.
Thank you.
Item 6E, Independent Contractor Agreement, Superintendent Brad.
This is just a contract agreement with Mark Patrick, who is a guy that really we working with our finance team to ensure, not only as we think about the ESTER funding and all the grants that we have, as they transition, in some cases into our ecosystem and out of our ecosystem in the coming year, that we're looking at outside intelligence that can help us see opportunities and risks as we think about those positive and negative forces of revenue that we do expect. So, this is just an example of an opportunity to work with a consultant that has 30 years of experience in helping manage some of this work, and our team feels like it's a wise investment because of the complexity that we continue to have with ESTER money and all the grant monies that Ms. Karen Leighton has brought into our system, so.
Any board members have any questions?
Well, I think mostly, he's going to allow a lot of just increased awareness due to the experiences that he has across the state, and allows us to continue to inform the budget in an intelligent way. As we think about Jessica's transition this year with the first budget process, she, Jessica has 20 years of financial experience, but school finance and all the statutes are unique, so that's part of our conversation.
You don't write it on that anymore, do you, Ms. Berry? Any other questions? Okay, so then I would need a motion to approve, to approve the independent contractor agreement as presented. Motion by Ms. Bowling? Second by Ms. Hollingshead? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Moving on into Section 7, 7A, Grant Application, Ms. Arnold.
I'm not Karen Leighton, so I'm not bearing as much good news as she usually does. I'm basically here tonight asking that we can apply for a grant through KISTI. So, I believe the Area Technology Center has an opportunity to apply for some equipment for their center through KISTI, so we're just asking for us to be approved to move forward with that application process.
So, it's just this one grant application that we're looking at tonight? Off the top of your head, do you know how much they're applying?
Click on the decision paper. I think it's around $10,000. You know, I am a fill-in tonight, so.
I know the maximum is $10,000. I didn't know if we were going to go for the max or not.
Yes. Oh, and she also added, we've been asked to be a part of a CTE showcase where we highlight the Bluegrass Aerospace Experience at the Kentucky School Board Association event, also our Health Science Collab, and we get funding to help create that display and materials, so that was added to this paper. So, asking for the KISTI grant and the two grants for the CTE showcase.
What KSBA?
The State KSBA meeting in February.
In February? Did you have anything to do with that? Okay, so then, are there any other questions about either the KISTI grant or the CTE grants that will help fund those pieces that Ms. Arnold was just talking about? Okay, then I would need a motion to approve the grant applications as presented. Motion by Mr. Dickerson? Second by Ms. Berry? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Ms. Arnold. Moving to 7B, Bus and Maintenance Garage Schematic Design, Mr. Ward.
Thank you. Tonight, we are bringing to you the schematic design for the bus maintenance facility. We haven't talked about this one as much, but it's the reorganization of the old facility that was just north of the High Area Technology Center. Two of the locations just north of the academy. So, in this site plan that you're seeing, the academy is the square, the white square. The proposed bus garage would be attached to the academy by canopies, so that the north section of the academy, some of those spaces can be used as offices and equipment storage and resources for the bus maintenance staff. And then the bus service lanes themselves would be in the new facility, that's the gray box. And then everything to the west would be the new lot provided for 75 buses. Circulation would be off of, circulation would be off of the road in front of Cage and would come in just north of the bus maintenance facility. And there's two lanes of the bus maintenance facility itself that loop around, so go to the plan, we can talk about that. It's the next sheet.
This is the current central office part.
Yes.
This is the current central office. This is the current academy. This is the bus garage. This is the field that is in.
So we worked with Mr. Marchese early in the organization of the facility. It's a five bay facility. The areas shown with crossmarks are where some of the service equipment could be between the bus space. And then to the right side of the facility are apart storage, some offices and restrooms. It's a pre... It's a pre-engineered steel with brick and steel panels on the outside to correspond to the academy. And as I described on the site plan, there's three bays are just entered from one side, so in the north on the top of the page there. But then two bays are pull-through so that a bus can come in from the north and then pull around and circle back to the bus lot. And then this plan also shows some of those spaces at the north side of the current academy that are used for offices and training and equipment storage and things at the north side of the academy. I can try to answer any questions. It's a fairly simple building, but yeah.
I typically try not to get down the weeds on this, but I'm pretty sure I'll have at least a couple of bus drivers that always share things with me or thoughts. Scroll back up to the top one. So I'm not sure if typically bus drivers pull in forward or back in. I would think typically back in so that engineers are out towards the drive-through area, whether it's for jumping, maintenance if need be, or whatever, which means either the lines of the parking lot or the arrows of the direction would need to be flip-flopped. But just something to think, again, I don't like to get into weeds on these, but it might be something to ask Jeff and some of the bus driving staff which way on that.
Right, we can talk to Mr. Marchese about that. I think the assumption with this type plan is that they would pull in forward because we are going to provide stations where the buses can be hooked up for heating and that kind of thing.
That's why I'd solve it. That's why I need to stay out of weeds. Do we have any other questions for Mr. Ward?
As discussed with some of the other projects, this is at schematic design, so this is really just establishing the criteria for how we would move forward. We haven't engaged engineers yet, really. That approval tonight would allow us to then start with engineering.
Stephen, you said something, but the microphone cut off. You said prefab.
Pre-engineered.
Pre-engineered.
Which is, should be familiar to a lot of folks. It's a steel structure, but it's one that's engineered by the company that also provides the structure. And it enables that to be done more economically than conventional construction.
And with this being a maintenance facility that's primarily the housework on the equipment, that prefab is typically the way to go.
Right. The current bus maintenance facility was a pre-engineered facility when it was built. And we explored whether it was economical at all to relocate that facility, and it was going to be more expensive.
Other questions? So then I would need a motion to approve the schematic design as presented. Motion by Ms. Bowing, second by Ms. Hollingshead. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? I heard an aye from Mr. Dickerson as well. Motion passes five zero. Moving on into seven C, Revised District Facility Plan and Nelson County Community Campus Finding.
Last month, the meeting, you authorized the LPC to be reconvened because there was the proposal that came out of the stakeholder meetings and the design team meetings that a preferable approach to the Nelson County Community Campus project would be replacement of some of that facility instead of renovation. But the district facility plan only accommodated renovation. We did have that LPC meeting. We brought to the LPC language that Kentucky Department of Education recommended we use. We had gone to them and asked what changes would need to be included for this district facility plan to reflect the proposed changes. Everything in blue is what was changed last year. Everything in green is what is proposed as part of this change. The Kentucky Department of Education recommended we handle this as a finding, which is a fairly simple procedure. It can be approved by the Department of Education at the staff level. What it means to do a finding is that only one facility is affected on the whole district facility plan and that it doesn't dramatically increase the district need, which is the bottom line number on the plan. So if you scroll through the file, almost all of the district facility plan is still the blue plan that was approved last year. Only the top line item, which was the Nelson County Community Campus, that section that described renovation is almost all struck out. And then we added language about the new construction that would be proposed. And then down in the fives and the very end of the document, there are some things that could not be considered priority one pieces of the project, but that they recommended go under the fives. So there are a couple of green items there at the bottom. And one thing I wanted to clarify that came up in last month's meeting, Ms. Berry, you caught me off guard on the capacity of the high school last time, and I didn't have a good answer for you. But the standard classrooms accommodate the 780 students that I thought I was remembering last time. What I did not take into account is that the Department of Education calculates high schools as if the students are all over the building in art classes and gym classes and cafeteria and various things. So the calculated capacity for the high school section would be 866. That's just for the high school section.
Yeah, I read their restrictions. It's almost like they're not counting big students. Everybody's supposed to be medium class for high school kids. I read it where it went down to per centimeter or inches per space, per room, per... Yeah, I'm with you. Thank you.
Ms. Bowing, I know you were there at the LPC last night. Some of us had other things going on. I mean, other input or thoughts you had from the conversations?
Not really. I mean, it seemed to be very straightforward in what Stephen presented. We did a walkthrough, one wing of the building and looked at a couple of classrooms. And the lack of just space and technology in that building is, needs to happen.
Aged.
Yeah, it's aged. It needs to happen.
Go ahead, Ms. Ward.
So this was the plan that was presented to the LPC and that was approved by the LPC. If the board accepts this plan, it will go back to the Department of Education for their consideration. The design that has been presented isn't necessarily fixed in place, though. This just allows us to know that it could go forward if that's the direction the district chooses. So there's still a whole series of decisions that would be made over the course of design.
Okay, I got another question. I notice we're running up and down and up and down on those codes on the right. What is the total cost? Just give me a round sum.
The total cost of a complete district facility plan, and I'm going to come back to that because there's...
No, what was I hearing?
Forty-three, it's just over $43 million on the whole district facility plan. But I want to remind, I think we've had this conversation before, that's using the numbers that KDE wants us to use for facilities across the state. It's not tied to the current construction market. So this is a tool for the Department of Education. It's not necessarily the pricing that relates to what you would see in a project.
Yes, because we all know nothing ever comes in costed as opposed to. That we hope it's... Okay, now, you said $43 million. That is for just this project.
No, ma'am, that's for the whole district facility.
That's what I'm saying, I want to know. Okay, so tell me exactly what it's for. The 43 is for Thomas Nelson in Nelson County?
I think if you scroll down, one is Nelson County. Two was Thomas Nelson.
Yep.
Three, there's some Old Kentucky Home, there's some Area Technology Center, New Haven, Coxas Creek, some technology improvements, some door hardware improvements. So there's a whole variety of things that get you to that bottom line number on the bottom right, which, right there, the 43, 298, is what the district facility plan total is.
Okay, now how much, Stephen, do you think that, we will run over what kind of percentage maybe?
Don't know how to answer that right now.
I'm going to talk about this in the next scenario. This number, 43 million, would have been about right in 2010.
That's what I'm saying.
So I'd say today's number, if you did every project on here, you're looking at 100% increase. So that's numbers from KDE. This is a part of the, unique part of navigating bureaucracy. That number right there was probably, would have worked in 2010. 2022, the number's 100% more. At least, 43 million will be 86 million. And that's not a totally accurate prediction, right? But that's generically, I think.
Well, I just want everybody to know exactly what we're dealing with. Thank you.
Stephen's not going to say that because he can't because the number whatever he gives isn't going to be right. But I can say it generically, knowing it's not going to be right. But his reality is a little different.
And then, of course, I mean, assuming there's all kinds of factors here. You know, again, going back to 2010, Thomas Nelson High School came in under budget. Of course, that was 2010. The Christian County scenario that we've heard about going on right now, a big part of that, I talked with one of their district administrators, they had one bidder on their ground prep. And I'd say that probably the ground prep in that area was quite a bit different than what we'd be looking at the ground prep in this part of the state. So especially if there's only one bidder. So, you know, there's all kinds of factors there. Which I think it's safe, and we want to, you use the word exact. I don't think we can ever use that word exact.
But I want a round...
Yeah. So, Mr. Ward, if you can, or maybe it's Ms. Bowing. So it sounded like that the LPC, Local Planning Committee, after listening to the presentation, having their conversations last night, they recommended the changes that you're showing to us. I mean, was it similar consensus as before? Sixteen, three, or whatever it might have been?
Yeah, we had a few people missing last night.
Okay. And I would hope that some of the high school, whether it was from Thomas Nelson or Nelson County High School that were part of that committee were there so that they could have that perspective of why, after presenting this new approach at Nelson County High School, maybe the light bulbs went on. And then, maybe one more question, Mr. Ward. Because there was something that one of the guest speakers said, that made me think of this. Do I remember correctly, or did I maybe misread, talking about the severe weather shelter? I know that that came into place back several years ago, I think out of Hurricane whatever that went through far western Kentucky. The legislature passed something. Have they, did they suspend that, or?
There is, in the current code, for about three years now, for new school construction, there is a requirement for a tornado shelter. The district doesn't have any tornado shelters now, but starting with that code, I think it was 2019, maybe 2018, new school construction would require tornado shelters. We went to Housing Buildings and Construction with the Thomas Nelson Plan, and they said that it was not something they would consider new construction or construction of a new school. So they did not require that that have a tornado shelter. We have done two schools ground up that did have tornado shelters over the past couple of years. But Housing Buildings and Construction did not say that that would be required for Thomas Nelson.
So, I mean, was it you or Ms. Bowing, or someone else?
Right.
To be fair, the buildings, any building that's built in a district in general, in all codes that the state would ask them to meet, right? Like, they're not going to allow any of the buildings to go through without that, just as a generic statement. So I would also say...
Yeah, go ahead.
Thomas Nelson is a concrete school, as will the addition be, unlike Nelson County High School, which is a block, a concrete block school. They will withstand very severe weather. They just won't withstand 250 mile per hour winds. And one clarification about community shelters versus what school tornado shelter code is intended to accomplish. There are FEMA shelters, which are intended to be community shelters and which the community is meant to be welcomed into the current...
Current Kentucky's.
Yes. Right. The current Kentucky code for new school construction is that we provide a tornado shelter for the occupants of the building. It's not a FEMA shelter, it's a school shelter.
Mr. Dickerson, did you have questions, or?
Mr. Ward, what percentage of existing buildings in the state who own the home are supposed to currently paying for tornado shelters?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't think there would be very many because that code is only three years old and schools in general were not building those before this code requirement. But I don't know the answer.
Other questions? Okay, were you getting ready to say something?
I was just going to say, this particular motion is just related to the DFP, which includes the Nelson County High School shift. That's all.
So then, we'd need a motion to approve the District Facility Plan finding as has been presented and authorized submission to KDE.
Correct.
I make a question.
Motion by Ms. Bowing. Second by Mr. Dickerson. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? I think I heard your aye, Mr. Dickerson?
Yes.
Okay. All opposed? Motion passes five zero. Moving on into seven D, Thomas Nelson Community Campus Construction Documents. Mr. Ward.
So I'm going to start out just talking a little bit about the financial planning process. And then Stephen and some of the team members that were a part of the design process will talk through some of the summary of the Thomas Nelson Community Campus. It's 154 pages. We're not going to go through all 154 pages, obviously. They're going to be able to talk through a general summary. But before we do that, I'm going to talk through some of the financial planning process as we look at the conversations tonight. Everything has to be taken within the context of current financial, future financial forces at play. So again, just generically, most of you in the room have been a part of conversations in the past year and a half. There are a few people that maybe have not been. But facility planning and the facility planning money in general is meant to be spent on expanded student opportunity. It's meant to consider demographics, enrollment, transportation patterns in the district. It's meant to look at long-term financial efficiency. These were the three really pieces that led the Local Planning Committee to the current DFP process. So facility planning financials, as a reminder, when you think about the money, we're talking about a lot of money. We're talking about... about a lot of money, we're talking about a facility plan that potentially would cost eighty to a hundred million dollars if it was to be ever acted upon, that could change over time, that's currently, if you look at the window, we're looking at eighty to a hundred million dollars. Facility funds come from the bottom, sixty-point-eight cents of the school tax rate, that's legislatively established through decisions that were made thirty years ago, twenty years ago, and eighteen years ago, by Boards of Education, that no one here was a part of, but may have been aware of. Facility funds can only be spent on facilities, they cannot be spent on anything else. As a reminder, no annual operating expenses or salaries are part of that facility funding process, that protects the integrity of the facility fund. Over the next twenty years, the Nelson County Schools will generate a hundred and fifty million dollars in revenue, for facility upgrades, for students and community, unless legislation changes. Currently, the district is on the path to generate a hundred and fifty million dollars over the next twenty years, that's if the property values don't increase at all. NCS has continued to increase its financial standing and solvency over the past four years, that further allows us to evaluate long-term financial planning. I share this, because it's all relevant to the context, not that you, you don't typically spend general fund monies, but there are times where you do need some small flexibility to occur, whether that's for furniture in a building, or small changes that occur along the way. So these are all part of the financial broad comparisons that exist. There are forces that impact our financing negatively, positively, and somewhere in between. On the positive trend, as property values increase across Nelson County, whether we, as a, whether the Nelson County Board of Education chooses to or not, you, the facility nickel will generate more revenue. Let me give a good example, it's been a lot of conversations about tax rates, next year, the Nelson County Board of Education chooses to increase zero revenue, so zero percent increase in revenue, and our property tax, our property values increase, the facility fund will also increase, even if the Nelson County Board of Education does nothing. I share that, because it's part of the legislative formula, which is what's happened over the last five years. So the last five years, the Nelson County property values have increased significantly, to the tune of forty percent, therefore, whether we like it or not, our facility revenue has also increased by forty percent, which has led us to a lot of conversations around that. The School Planning Facility Commission, and legislative budget increases in SIC, and facility funding for schools, has continued to increase revenue for facilities. So the left side, those two positive forces, the primary, primary drivers of increased funding, plain and simple. So we went from seven million, potentially as a board, to forty-five million today, and could be as high as eighty-five million by twenty-twenty-six. Those are, those are generic starting points, they are conservative estimates of funding, we're generating over seven and a half million dollars a year right now, in facility funding, and the board currently can do nothing about that, positively or negatively, you can't, you can't move that money, can't be touched. On the right side, construction costs and any financial volatility impact the ability for any government bonding agency to positively or negatively contribute to any of these projects. Increased construction costs, I mean, it's plain and simple, the higher construction cost, the less you can do, and volatility is volatility. The bottom part is something the Nelson County Schools has never really done much of, but any board commitment to contribute to facilities through other funding mechanisms also increases your facility funding. Just, those are the three forces, any questions about those? Let me look at that. So this is our current bonding potential, based on where we stand, this number continues to ebb and flow, as other forces evolve, so we presented this last night, so, with zero dollars out of the general fund, we currently sit at forty-five point six million dollars, as you look at seven-one-twenty-six, if no other economic forces change, if property values stay the same, if everything stays the same as it is today, which it won't, we would be at sixty-three million dollars in bonding. If you look at the top two on the right, it says three hundred thousand in the general fund, nine hundred thousand, you could do any variation of thereof, you could do fifty thousand, hundred thousand, whatever. Those numbers say that if the district allocated three hundred thousand dollars towards these payments, that it would increase the bonding that much, that's five to six years of one-time payments, all those things are really just board decisions that if they ever got there, they could do it. Essentially, these are just very broad conservative estimates of where we stand right now, I say conservative, they're, we're always airing on the low end, by nature, these are the low end of our conversation. So, these are generic, Stephen would tell you, he would tell me that these numbers are not the exact numbers, but these are very generic costs. Tonight, Thomas Nelson Community Campus, the projected construction cost is nineteen-point-nine million dollars, for that additional middle school wing, that's at the very top. Purpose of the project is expanded middle school and high school opportunity. The New Haven facility is ten and a half million dollar projection today. Nelson County Community Campus Phase One, generically, thirty million dollar projection. Nelson County Community Campus Phase Two, twenty million dollars, again, just very broad estimates. Coxus Creek, five and a half million dollars, on the right side, it gives some examples of why those facilities would be upgraded. The, any decision on any of these pieces are obviously board decisions, we had a guest speaker speak earlier, these are all things that, you know, any board of education, whether it's November, December, January, March, April, May, these are all subject to board decisions, and those are very broad costs. So, we're also, just a reminder, one of the things we have to talk about in financial planning is financial efficiency of cost of delivery. Right now, the Nelson County Schools is organized in a way that is as callously as any district in the state of Kentucky, due to the size of our schools. Thirty years ago, we committed to community schools, well, let's look at the most expensive schools in the district, they're also our smallest schools, Bloomfield Elementary, New Haven, and Boston. Right now, a student at Bloomfield Elementary School, it costs fifty percent more to educate than a student at Thomas Nelson High School, and that is a byproduct of the way this school is organized. I share this with you, just as a reference point to think about long-term financial planning. Demographic trends, this is also a reminder, as you look at Thomas Nelson Community Campus, and Nelson County Community Campus, what we see is clearly really centralized population and student enrollment growth, west side of growth, we also see student enrollment being stable, this is our four current middle schools, notice where the primary driver of our population is, this heat map could be much more effective if it had pink and white, like they do on the Weather Channel, but apparently in Google Data Dashboard didn't have those layers, because right in the middle were OKHs, and the city of Bardstown would be white and pink, because that's the primary enrollment that we're getting across our district. You can see, growth is centralized, this conversation around these two campuses is also based on that. This is a demographic review of the last twelve, ten years, this shows the three areas where we're seeing growth, in student age population and population, Coxus Creek, Deetsville, Samuels, this also shows, you look at nine-three-oh-four, the middle of that, it says total twelve-point-seven-two percent, under eighteen, sixteen-point-two-four percent, what that means is, that's the city of Bardstown, the city of Bardstown is experiencing more growth in student age population, in that centralized area than any other place. On the right side, the red circle is the Botland area, the Woodlawn area, there's a projection that over the next ten years, that too will be a major driver of growth from twenty-twenty to twenty-thirty, this, this is based on twenty-ten to twenty-twenty. If you look at our outlined communities, from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty, every community lost some layer of student age population, New Haven, Boston, Bloomfield. Those areas of students living under the age of eight, under the age of eighteen, we have not seen an impact on enrollment, in fact, our Boston enrollment has increased, our New Haven enrollment has increased. So this doesn't necessarily align to enrollment, the only area we've seen impacted by enrollment over the past ten years is Bloomfield area, and it's just a coincidence that we're talking about from that facility. We have seen a decrease in enrollment at Bloomfield Middle School and Bloomfield Elementary School, which does somewhat coincide with the data you see here, but this data is not a high, high prediction, it's really a lag of measure. So, this is our currently, you think about the conversations we're having around Thomas Nelson or Nelson County High School, this is currently where our middle school students live. All over the county, and you can see, that's just a nature of our geography in Nelson County, it's, it's just unique, you know, decentralized is a primary, I mean, it's the primary piece, but you just get a sense where our kids are coming from. The original, so the conversation we're talking about with Thomas Nelson and Nelson County, the middle line there, thirty-one E, is, has been the divider since two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve. These conversations we've been having have been based around that, this again, gives you an example, just of what we're talking about with impact, this is generically where those middle schools would end up, in terms of numbers. I think the reality is, there's five hundred students in, on the west side, five hundred and fifty on the east side, we are seeing growth in our, in our conversations as we get closer to high school, in fact, our high school enrollment's up again this year, so, you know, the enrollment's relatively stable across the district, or up slightly. Access and opportunity, this is the campus that we're talking about today, Thomas Nelson Campus, someone asked about priority, one of the reasons it would be a priority decision is it would take a hundred and thirty-five students from New Haven, it would take a hundred and twenty students from Boston, a hundred and a hundred and twenty students from Bloomfield that live in Coxus Creek, Deetsville, Richard Run, a hundred and a hundred and twenty students in Bardstown, Najis, and Stonehouse, they would all be impacted by this campus, as it's currently designed. So there's a lot of impact on this decision, as you look at these conversations here. As we talk about money, we also have to talk about who's impacted, I think our reality is, every single student runs through these four schools currently, and every student would be impacted. Same way at Nelson County High School, we're looking at two hundred and fifty-plus students in Coxus Creek, Bloomfield, Fairfield, and Chaplain, as well as Woodlawn, Bardstown, and Bollum areas that are impacted by that campus. I think additionally, just reminding the board of our longstanding conversation about commitment to community elementary schools, and bridging pre-K, Boston this year has the highest preschool enrollment that we've had, as well as New Haven, that's because we have those locally. At the same time, I'll be frank, unless Boston, New Haven, middle school students transition, we won't be able to sustain that over the long term, in our current, unless we read district kids out of Boston. That's just a conversation to remember, as we think about that. I think the access and opportunity conversation, currently Boston, we're at the Boston School, the middle school is essentially along the backside of this gym, it's about as long as this gym, there are five teachers in the middle school, offering a lot of options, considering that there's five teachers. The community campus moves that from five teachers on middle school campus to fifty-five to sixty teachers, part of that is understanding the nature of middle school and high school continue to change, effort, access and opportunity. So I share this as a conversation to understand, this is a bigger conversation, it's not just about Thomas Nelson, it's also about all middle school students. I think there's also been conversation come up over the past, really, year, especially over the last few months, about, you know, Thomas Nelson's campus being a middle school, or a six-twelve, or a high school. In order for Thomas Nelson campus to be any of those things, it has to expand, and that's just a reminder, whether it's a high school, a middle school, or a six-twelve campus, it would have to expand, it will not have the capacity to serve in all forms and fashions, unless it keeps, unless we keep it exactly like it is currently. So I share this as an introduction, we talk about money, and it's a lot of money, there's no question, and inflation, and the other realities of the world, but we also, as we talk about money, we're talking about the impact on these layers, and these demographics, the future trends. When we spend this kind of money as a school system, these are not decisions that are thought about within the next year, or two years, they're thought about within the next thirty. In fact, thirty years ago, the facility plan went through a process that impacted where we are today, and that's where we are at this point in time, is looking at the next twenty to thirty years. So, any questions about the financing?
Me. I want to know, this is only the building, and I know you're trying to get across to us, but it is, okay? I don't have any problem with that, where my problem comes, it's not a problem, it's a concern, I'll put it that way. It's not just the building, we're, we have gotten to provide students places to athletically, because when you start building, as we well know, what's left on that, on those sheets, and Stephen knows too, because I've said it before, that's not, that's not a happy thing. So we've got kids with no playground, I mean, we've got kids with no softball field, we've got kids with no baseball, we've got kids, so, it's just not the building I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about when we can get our students back into a routine that, that encompasses all of school, not just the brick and mortar, or whatever, you know.
Are you talking about the Nelson County Community Campus specifically?
I'm talking about any of it, it takes away any kind of opportunity for these kids to, to use out, that's what I'm talking about. Because I know, some of this is in blue ink, some of it's in red, and the thing, the very first one that was shown in the PLC was things that were going, items that were going to be done with the money, and things that would have to wait to be done, am I not right?
You mean item five?
Yes.
The five, is it?
Yes, okay.
Unless they're locally funded.
Yeah, unless, and we don't have that kind of money to fund, some of this kind of, what we're talking, that was talked about in the first two PLCs.
Right.
That's, that's my concern, it's just not the building, it's, it's how to get the kids back into what we consider school life.
Any other questions?
Yes, that's what I'm, I'm talking about, I'm talking about how long it's going to take.
The only athletic facility that would be impacted is the softball field of Nelson County, and the, which, is, if we look back to, the baseball field doesn't, right, it doesn't have to be, the baseball field doesn't have to be, it's, that's a choice. So, the softball field would be impacted, and if you, we go back to September, we did transfer some funds to ensure that the softball field could be impacted if the boards so chose, so there was one point three million transferred to BG One for athletics at Nelson County High School, that's a, that was a part of our annual financial conversation in September. So we do have one point three million set aside for the Nelson County High School athletic initial process.
Yeah, that's why I was asking, people talking about Nelson County Community Campus, was because of the softball field in particular, I don't think there's anything necessarily that would be immediately, directly, or maybe even for quite some time impacted at Thomas Nelson Community Campus, you know, the bringing in of the middle school, it is, but also the bringing in of middle school athletics, typically, so like, middle school football, high school football, don't really align as far as the seasons or the playing, scheduled play games. scheduled play games. Softball, I think, a little bit different, I don't know if basketball is, so there's, yeah. It was Nelson County High School, I think, was the main.
I think one of the deals on there was the football, I mean, an outdoor complex that was discussed months ago. Do you remember? Outside complex?
At Nelson County High School, right, yeah.
That's what I'm saying. We talked about, there was talk about a few big strokes.
Did you experience an athletic indoor facility, is that what you're talking about?
So the issue too, we originally did, with the LPC process, as a reminder, KDE wouldn't allow any athletics on the DFP. So there was, they would not allow any athletic, but just a, has to be a five. So all learning facilities have to come before athletic facilities on the DFP.
Superintendent Bradley, if you don't mind on the slide deck that you've got there, I just want to ask you a couple of questions to make sure I'm reading some things right. Go, if you can go back to, it's the ninth slide, it's the one right after the heat map? At, yeah, that one right there. Is, if I remember, is this the one that planning and zoning, oh, Ms. Crowe, shared at the LPC? Is that what this one is? This is their projected numbers that they were using as part of?
This is actual numbers. These are real census numbers from growth from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty.
Okay, but these are the ones that she had shared at the LPC?
Yes.
Okay. And, let me see, oh, the very next slide. So at the very top, is it the light blue area, the one-twenty and the one-ten, the two-hundred-and-thirty? Those are Bloomfield Middle School students?
The Cox's Creek, right, yeah. So that'd be the Cox's Creek District.
Okay. Yeah, because, about where that number one-ten is, that's probably about where Cox's Creek Elementary School is right now?
That's right, here.
Okay, just getting my bearings on that. And then there was one more question I had again, just to make sure. I know maybe that was it, just those two. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I was interpreting the slide deck right.
So I do just want to remind, you know, everyone, long-term financial efficiency is not the, it's not the number one driver of facility planning. Student opportunity is. But long-term financial efficiency is a big part of the conversation. We look at the recurring general fund conversation and cost of delivery in schools right now. And I'll continue to say this, as long as I'm in this seat, is right now, we are paying more and getting less because of our organizational delivery. And that is just, meaning, we're able to provide students less. At the same time, as one of our, as I've heard people say, facilities, the facility does not make the school, right? So the facility does not make the school. You can have great schools and not great facilities. Also, you do need in that facility, the human resource and the access and the opportunity to provide to students. And that's really a big part of the conversation. Not only where people live and where we're seeing enrollment, but long-term financial efficiency and student opportunity do go hand in hand in what will continue to be a uniquely competitive market in education.
So other questions for either Superintendent Bradley or Mr. Ward on this particular item here, seven D?
Yeah, I spoke about finances because the money and the decision-making, rather money, tonight is not a commitment to that money, it's a commitment to the design. So, just to be clear, that money's not on the table tonight.
So then I guess the question would be, Mr. Ward, what do you have to share with us?
It'll be a big change, change in gear here. What I have to share tonight is the construction document presentation for Thomas Nelson High School. It represents the biggest part of the design work over the course of a project. After this point, the project is ready to go out for bidding for, so that you can know the actual cost instead of just projected costs. So what I'll present right now is the, sort of the endpoint of the design process that allows us to go for bidding. I'll show you just a few of the black and white drawings that are going to be part of the KDE package. Those are in your, in your slide deck. But a, but I'll show you images that kind of represent what these things are showing. This first one is the overall site plan of the middle school addition. So to the top right is the footprint of Thomas Nelson High School. And then the, everything in gray is the, the middle school addition. To the top of the page is where General's Boulevard comes into the site. And then to the bottom of the page is where a new driveway would come into the site from the west. And the reason that we have the driveways organized like we do is that, first KYTC, the transit cabinet required that we have multiple entrances. But it also allowed us to set up a pickup and drop-off sequence that can be completely separate from the high school pickup and drop-off sequence, and can accommodate a good amount of car stacking leading up to the entrance to the middle school. The loop in the middle of the drawing is that pickup and drop-off loop. It's also got some parallel parking along the side. And then there's parking for seventy-five cars in the, in the front. So that's the overall footprint there. The pond that is currently on the site is still there. We're going to be doing some planting around it and some obstructions just to make sure that it's, that students are protected. But we also allow that it can be accessed in cases of programming. The ag department has mentioned an interest in programming around the pond and some things like that. So we wanted to make sure it was both safe, but also available as a resource on the site. And I did not include, Ms. Berry brought up athletics. I did not include the site plan in the slide deck showing the other side of General's Boulevard. But we are reworking the field on the other side of General's Boulevard to be that middle school field. And we chose to put it there instead of on the west side of the site because it allowed for us to have a full-size field on that other side. There's a significant amount of grade change across that site. So you'll see in the building design how we've used that grade change in the, in the project. So this is the grading plan for the project. And then elevations, these are the flat, kind of less interesting versions of the drawings that show the outside of the building. And that's why I wanted to bring some rendered views as well, so that these can translate into kind of what the view of the school could be. General's Boulevard is on the left in this image. The addition extends out toward two-forty-five from the current high school. So you're seeing the high school in the background. And everything to the right of the image is the, the middle school expansion. As you can see, the material choices, everything we did from, on the outside of the building was really meant to just complement Thomas Nelson High School. It's not a shift in direction or a change. We want to have one identity for the whole school so that it, that it feels like a connected campus. And then this is the view from the drop-off loop. So again, it's totally separate from the drop-off and parking at the high school. It leads toward a separate middle school entrance, which is there in the middle. And the classroom wing is extending off to the left side. The building plan looks like this. So what you're seeing, extending from the current Thomas Nelson High School, there's a central lobby that connects the gym to the bottom of the page and the classroom wing to the top left of the page. That lobby would be a gathering space before gym events, but also is designed to also provide breakout and collaborative learning spaces in the lobby itself. And then the classroom wing extends off to the north and has sixteen classrooms that can be combined into double classrooms. And I'll show you that as we go forward. So this is a view of the lobby. So now we're looking back at the entrance. As you can see, we've showed in the image how learning spaces can be set up in that lobby. But what you're also seeing to the right is the entrance to the classroom wing, and to the left, the entrance to the gym. And then turning the other direction is access to outdoor spaces and access to the high school back down through the center of the image. The gym is a, has two courts. It has, we've tried to keep any penetrations from the floors. As we've known across the district in the past, any penetrations for volleyball stanchions and things like that can lead to issues over the long term in these floors. So the basketball goals retract up like you're used to, but also the volleyball goals retract up in this gym, so that we don't have penetrations in the floor. The striping in the gym is set up for basketball, volleyball, and archery, which has been a popular sport at Thomas Nelson. Here's, looking the other direction, there are bleachers for six-hundred capacity. Two sides. So there's bleachers on that far side underneath the window, and then there's bleachers on this near side, or on, I guess, on the far side in this view as well. So about three-hundred capacity on either side. And it's set up so that there can be a dividing curtain, so separate activities can be going on on either side of that dividing curtain. This is a classroom wing enlarged plan, just that first group of eight classrooms. And we've set up the classrooms in discussions with the stakeholders group so that there can be single classrooms like everybody's been used to over, over a long period of time. But then those also can be combined for co-teaching opportunities or for larger group activities into, into two conjoined classrooms. And that's throughout the classroom. And then between the classrooms, there are a series of three specialized areas which can be used for pull-outs or breakout activities, presentations. And there's one space that we identified as kind of a wet and messy space. It could be for project building and things like that, where there's a sink and, and it's harder surfaces. And then at the end of the building, looking out at two-forty-five, is another one of the breakout spaces, the commons we're calling it. So that's the, the big picture of the school as we've worked with the stakeholder group to develop it. And the stakeholder group wanted to come talk to you a little bit about some of the process that they, that they were part of.
Yeah, so, you know, I think it's important as we look at the conversation, Mrs. Kolski was able to talk about Nelson County High School. We have to continue to bring the team to the table. This is, this process unfolded over the course of many, many meetings. And that's part of the team you're talking to. What they see as pros of this particular conversation.
So over the past seven months, I've been lucky enough to work with an awesome group of stakeholders. This is not everyone, but it is a great kind of squad of our community that have been able to engage in conversations regarding optimal learning experiences for students as we work together and collaborate, just like Nelson County, Cox's Creek, New Haven, that have been having these stakeholder conversations too. So it's easy to look at this paper, see the images here, but there's definitely a human side to this too as far as the planning that goes into it, the discussions that go along with this as well. So I thought it was great to highlight some of the conversations about what brought you to the stakeholder meets, what brought you to the conversations around the Thomas Nelson Community Campus, and then how through these conversations over the past several months, this reaches that optimal environment for students and teachers alike. So I'm really going to just hand it off to them, because they're really the brains behind this. Again, I'm lucky enough to work with all the people here in some capacities. So I'll hand it off to Mr. Boyd first. You'll just introduce yourselves, we'll bring you to the table, and then also just some things that this brought.
Sure, my name's Matt Boyd, and I currently teach and coach at Thomas Nelson. I'm the art teacher, I'm the track and cross country coach. But another reason that I kind of jumped on the opportunity immediately is that I have two small children in the district as well. I have a four-year-old at ELC and a six-year-old at Cox's Creek. So we want them coming to the facility. So I have a lot of investment in it, not just the two programs that I care about. But, so the two things that I was really, really interested in, obviously, every stakeholder is kind of like, well, what about the ag lab? What about the art program? You know, we want to see our programs highlighted and protected. But I really tried to like think about the voices of concern that I'd already heard. You know, and one of them was about, you know, the sixth graders being in high school. And so it meet, like, and I can speak to every member of this, this planning committee in that we, that was constantly coming back up. You know, it was like, well, where is this school, where are we going to go? Where does this start and stop? How are we keeping this apart? And just so you guys know that like that was a big area of concern. Another is cost. And I think one really cool and important thing about, it's not necessarily highlighted in that plan, is that they have repurposed multiple science labs in the existing high school to serve as middle school science labs. The science labs are like the most expensive possible thing to build. And we had some that were not, you know, necessarily utilized for science. So that they've incorporated those and incorporated my existing art studio space as the middle school art studio. And then shifted everything over to, you know, the other side to serve as high school stuff from going the other direction. But I just, anyway, just wanted you guys to kind of know, kind of, you know, things that I was looking at specifically, art and athletic facilities. One thing I think is really key about the athletic facilities is that, you know, I know a lot of these things are difficult to fund, but I think one thing I'll just mention is that they're even harder to fund later. You know, so it's one of those things, like, as we kind of went through some of the growing pains at Thomas Nelson, tripping over the football team in the field house or whatever, sharing locker rooms and whatnot, it's always like, why, why did we underbuild this? Why didn't we, we could have expanded this building twenty feet in one direction and achieved a lot more. And I think that that was something that we kind of constantly kept bringing back to the table. Joe and I, you know, everybody was like, I was championing for different things. To bring a little levity to the conversation, I want to mention the pond. We joke a lot about, like, we are, we are pro ponds. So we had a lot of fun kind of poking at Wes, who initially wanted to fill it in, just in case you needed another reason to like chastise him. We really like the pond. I've already mowed paths around the pond, like, you know, I'm going to fight the ag team for the pond. But it's, I just want you guys to know that we consider all aspects. You know what I mean, when we're blindly building buildings, it's been a, it's been a really interesting and lively process.
Hi, I'm Joe, Joe Piek, I'm student leadership director at Thomas Nelson. So my role is thinking about clubs and athletics. And of course, really thinking about, of this conversation, what's it look like to run a program through six through twelve? You know, and thinking about what's it look like for our coach to run that program? How do we protect those people, give them the ability to do that, as well as clubs, and give them their spaces? So that was really the conversation for me. I'm also a football coach there, so I was really just thinking about making sure everybody has their own space, they can think about, you know, what's it look like to really do a story within your program? So really making sure each program kind of has its own space and protecting those spaces. But still making sure we have, as in areas for middle school kids, for high school kids, prayer for games, and practice and things of that nature. So really, for me, that was the main things that came back, thought processes. Making sure that really everybody has a space in those programs to tell their own story, protect their own message there, as, you know, we're all trying to build special programs for kids. And then it's also thinking about, not only the programs we have right now, the programs that are going to come in the future, that are going to start to grow now, that we're going to have to go and get kids access to in the future, as well as the programs that, you know, we have in high school, but not even, you know, not necessarily giving the kid in middle schools right now. So we're trying to think about how, what's it look like to have all those middle school kids in that conversation and making sure we provide that space for them. So that's really, was my role of conversation.
Hi, my name is Martina, I'm Shaw. Most people probably know me in here. I've been in the district a long time. I'm currently administration here at Boston School. Just started that this summer. Before that, I was the diverse learner team. I've been at Foster Heights, I've worked at Bloomfield, and then I found my home here. So my stake, the reason why I've been on this committee, my So my stake, the reason why I've been on this committee, my sons are gone, they're in college now. But I still spend a lot of time at Thomas Nelson, if you can say yes. I do a lot there for the sports. I also engage a lot with the teachers and collaborate. But I also have a thirty-three-year-old grandson, and he's at the ELC. So I'm kind of really into this of thinking about the future. What will this hold for my grandson when he gets up there? What's gonna hold thirty years from now for all of our kids and our grandkids and our great-grandkids? So besides fighting with these guys some over the archery in the gym, because that was my big thing, because I started archery here, made sure I had the archery taken care of. I'm also thinking about the flexible seating, the collaborative areas for our students. What opportunities are we getting them to get together? Opening up those classroom doors, flexible seating, so they can spend more times as a group and learn about their passions and explore. Because right now, that's a struggle. It's a struggle here. And they're gonna have all kinds of opportunities to explore, have new experiences, and then socialize with other students. So I kind of was looking at athletic part of it and special ed part of it, and also just for my grandson. So this group here, plus there's a few here that are still sitting that were in our group. And I can tell you they spent a lot of time, a lot of energy, energy, talking and discussing. And also Melissa's sitting in here, we looked at safety a lot too. What will be the best, provide the safest environment for our students? There was a lot of discussion around the entrances and other areas in the building. And I will tell you this plan here, it checks all the boxes.
Hi, my name is Peyton Google, and I am a science leader at the New Haven School. One of the things that brought me to this team was just representing my fellow teachers at New Haven, but also the students there. I think one of the conversations that we first had and we continue to have over this process has been how can we provide equal resources across our district? And this community campus provides that for both students and teachers. Being on a team with five other middle school teachers, I am the only person who teaches science. I've planned for six, seven, and eight years science. I'm also an ag leader at my school. And this community campus allows more classes, more resources, more teams, more clubs for our students in Nelson County. I will say that the Thomas Nelson community campus allows us to dig deeper in things like project-based learning and classroom-based learning. And just really being able to work with our team whenever it comes to how do we connect math and science? And how do we connect social studies and science and things like that? And the community campus model allows us to do these things.
Hello, my name is Holly Smith. I'm a current leader at Thomas Nelson. And really, I'm gonna start by telling you a little bit about my story. I'm from Marion County, born and raised in Marion County. I went to Lindsey Wilson College on a softball scholarship. I coached softball at St. Catherine College for twelve years immediately upon graduation. Was there to the college club. When the college closed, I was lost. All I knew in my adult life was softball. The opportunity came open to apply for the softball position at Thomas Nelson. And seven years later, here I am. With that being said, I have a vested interest in this community campus. I look forward to seeing so many opportunities for students. Mr. Bradley, first thing he said was, this project isn't about the planning stage. This is about opportunities for students. I work with students that need to recover credits. Those students are sometimes the most vulnerable students that you will ever meet. This gives us the opportunity to be able to see those students from sixth grade all the way to senior year. To be able to catch those students that fall through the cracks. To be able to have opportunity to allow those students to show their passions. To show us what they love, to build relationships with these kids. From sixth grade all the way to eighth grade, all the way to twelfth grade. Also, I'm a house leader. I work with house stewards, so I have a house steward class at Thomas Nelson. The opportunities that a community campus would give for us to create and grow would, it would just open the door to so many opportunities for these students. And not only to mentor eleventh graders and tenth graders and ninth graders, but now we can mentor eighth graders, seventh graders, sixth graders. What a great opportunity that would be for these kids. I also teach leadership dynamics. It's a class of seniors. These seniors, when I was at St. Catherine, we were there, I went there as a junior college. I got to see students grow for two years. They got to come and play softball for me for two years. When it turned into a four-year institution, I got to see those students grow for four years. Now you're talking about seeing these students grow for what, eight years? I'm not good at math, but I think that's accurate. Seven years. Seven years, seven years of growth. And I, in my position, would get to see that from every angle. This community campus can be a negative thing, or you can flip the script and you can say it can be a very positive thing. When I got the opportunity to be a part of this committee, I was so excited. So having a softball background, I thought I'd be so excited to jump in and dive in and see what a company knew for softball. Man, the opportunities that this could have for our students, for our leaders and our community is huge.
Thank you. Just, just so you know, Miss Smith brings that energy every day. Because if you want to visit on Fridays, Hampton Hallway is the place to be. But really, I would just want to thank them again for spending their time, doing these conversations. They did in a lot of hours, a lot of land and wood power outside of those stakeholder meetings to really think about the best environment for all students in Nelson County. Whether it be through the lens of academics, athletics, especially just relationship building, like Ms. Smith said. Those were always conversations that were had. And the priorities of that team, I just wanted to be acknowledged. And again, I appreciate all of the voices that were heard to ensure that we are supporting all students in Nelson County. So thank you all.
So the presentation I gave showed some of the images of what is proposed. What this document is, it's the hundred and fifty-three pages that Wes referenced. And we made a point of getting that available to you guys last week so that you could see what has been put together. These are the complete bid documents. There are also the documents that will be used for permitting. So this is sort of that jumping off point. It includes not only the architectural documents that are represented in all the renderings, but it's all of the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, structural, and civil documents in that hundred and fifty-three pages. So that's the official document that we will ask for your approval of tonight so that it can be sent to KDE and can be sent out for bid. Other things that go along with that, that we can open up here in a moment, are with the construction documents is approval of the BG two, BG three, and a revised BG one. And all of those represent the package that KDE wants to see, so we can look through those. The BG two, if you click on that one, is what the Department of Education calls the outline specifications. This document is just a two-to-three-page document that describes what the construction systems are, what the utilities are, what the mechanical systems are, what the finishes will be. It's just sort of a snapshot of what the building is intended to be, so without looking through the hundred and fifty-three documents. So this is one of the things that KDE uses to inventory schools across the state. The next document, I think it's connected here if you want to keep scrolling through, it was part of that same, part of the same file, is the BG three, which is the financial document. It's the one that represents the costs associated with the project. It's what the construction manager is currently indicating is about a twenty million dollar project. So here, it's broken out as site development, general construction, HVAC, plumbing into those numbers. And then the nineteen point nine is a subtotal. And then under that is also the associated costs that come with the project.
So I think it's important, because I know the internet moves fast, that we talk through this a little bit. These numbers, these are projection numbers. They're not the actual, they're not the actual bid. I think as you look at this, the, how does inflation impact these numbers? Well, it impacts all of them, but it doesn't impact all of them equally. In particular, there's been a significant increase in HVAC and engineering cost by proportion, is that fair to say? By projection. HVAC and engineering cost in general have been both impacted. Yeah. You also, so we talked through, so the architect and engineering fee, just as a reminder, the architects do have a fee for doing all the work. That goes all the way to the end of the project. And so does the construction manager if the project goes to construction. These are all potential pieces of that process. So if you look at the contingency, so by law, you have to have five percent contingency for the project, which is, in the case of twenty million, it's one million dollar contingency. Previously, we've used that contingency for different things in other projects because we didn't spend it. But it does exist. So if you look at the total projected cost as of tonight, that number is twenty-three million, four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. That's nineteen million, nine hundred and sixty-one thousand in construction costs. As we've discussed, this is a significant amount of money. And if you look at this in comparison to where we were ten years ago, it's a hundred percent increase in cost over the last twelve years, based on prior construction cost, at least a hundred percent increase. So this is where it is today. This number could change. And we're just really sharing this with you as a projection. You're not committing to any funding at this time. We are obligated as a board to the Studio Kramer initial design process and these that were part of the contract. But these, these numbers are not where we are today. Any other documents on here?
Not there. BG one is also attached. And the BG one is revised here. The BG one is something that you passed a long time ago, but it always has to be updated to reflect what the BG three says. So because we are presenting the BG three to you, the BG one gets updated.
It says the same, yeah, it's the same. So these are, these building and grounds documents are submitted to Kentucky Department of Education. If approved, really it's just to keep them aware of the process. That's generally, is that appropriate? So tonight, this conversation is the design of the documents, the BG two, BG three, BG one. In terms of financial commitments, we have tonight no commitments other than the design process that's been contributed to, just to be clear.
Well, I mean, any financial, if I remember correctly from past construction projects, any financial commitments, true commitments, the core of it, doesn't really start happening until after we see bid packages come back. And deciding upon whether or not to accept one sum, all, none of the bid packages. Because only once we've got the bid packages do we then start dealing with the district finance corp and the sale of any volumes.
You have incurred some costs already.
Some, but the core of construction.
Construction, correct.
That's what, I'm sorry, that's what I meant by the core part.
We've incurred about a half million dollars in the cost of the design process up to today, just as a reference.
So what questions do any of us here have, Mr. Dickerson or anybody else, or Ms. Ward or Superintendent Bradley about what has been shared?
No questions, other than, or just a comment that appreciate all the input from thousands of hours. But in the LPC, I'd like to iterate the joint, thought, discussed, and approved, not once or twice, in the direction. And, you know, that one focuses on, two, really, you know, students find the relationship over time with the, you know, the sweet spot of where the plan with the students between five to eight hundred per, per building. I talked to other educators of other districts that it only wasted if they could have seen this scenario. You know, study shows it's good. Everything that we, in the last week, not, the facility business, that we achieve, as I mentioned in my previous statement. Everything from deep learning, from fifth grade to graduation, I can go on and on. I see, it's the, it's the pressure we've been talking about for years now, I see it, it's a change, especially with the, commendable people to convert.
I'll just share out there, Coach Smith, or are you, you go back there somewhere, yeah. So at first, I was thinking, gosh, someone who drinks more Mountain Dew than I do. But I had a little sidebar over here with Ms. Berry. I think your enthusiasm for the athletics perspective may only be surpassed by Ms. Berry. Because I'm from the sidebar, we were talking about volleyball tournaments. We were talking about basketball tournaments, because there would be three gym facilities on the community campus. And that's just those two, well, of course, Ms. Bowlin to my right here, whenever Mr. Ward mentioned archery. Or maybe it was Superintendent Bradley that did that. Ms. Bowlin probably is also in that same group whenever it comes to athletic opportunities.
Yeah, I actually have two students, two children of my own, that will grow up both in athletics. And so, I mean, obviously, the athletics side of it is a huge vested interest in me. I just didn't want to make it my focus.
Oh, no, not long. You didn't, you did not come off like that at all, Coach. No, thank you. I appreciate your enthusiasm. You broke up there just a little bit, a little bit choppy, Mr. Dickerson. It sounded like you were talking about the benefits of athletics and the facilities there.
I didn't mean, yeah, I didn't mean, oh, yeah, I didn't mean, once I was applying, the plan was, again, he is down, I hope they help me. But did not mention the benefits of, 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 running through the athletic portions of our, our district.
Ms. Berry, I think you would be ready to share something, or questions?
Either, any direction we take, we're gonna have to build. That's all there is to it, in my eyes. And we, we've got to make room for our growth. And this is the, this is the main thing to me. We've got to put these kids somewhere in a comfortable, comfortable atmosphere, in a comfortable place to learn. That's your big thing. We've got to have these kids ready for life. We have to have these kids ready to be able to read. We have to... We have to, we have to, we have to work really hard. Not saying we're not doing it now, but if I look for it to be any changes that occur, it'll make it even better. And to do that, we have to spend some money and make it work, and make it better for our kids. It's that simple to me.
Agreed. Ms. Berry, I appreciate you saying that. And we have the wherewithal already, as others have already stated, and I've stated, the three nickels, all what they are, and they're not changing, regardless of what the taxpayers feel, it is happening. If we're not having this money just piling up, if that's the case, then one of these nickels needs to go away, which I know they're not recalled, or I know that's a large call, but we do have the paychecks of it coming in, and the importance of these, and we have to grow the capacity for approval to facilitate. And we're looking out for the next 30 years with this money, and it's not increasing anybody's taxes.
Well, that, the, to your point there, Mr. Dickerson, the three nickels, starting 30-plus years ago, that members of the board then put into motion that first set of 30-year plans, which now we're also extending on into the next 30s. And I'll agree on Ms. Berry, I think you probably said it best with anybody there about what, about what we're getting done. Any other questions or comments?
I want to ask Ms. Smith, if she will actually come in and do just motivational speaking for us, because that type of energy alone reassures me in the decisions that we make as a board. I had the opportunity to bring Ms. Ashley and Adam Basom, Donovan Hawkins that ran in District Four, Adam Basom that ran in District One, and Ms. Eaton that ran also in District Four, to Boston during the day at the height of transition. Anyone that came that day, or within those two days, could not come in this school today and tell me that we don't need this. While math and reading are essential to our students, and essential to their growth and their development, the chaos that this school right now entails because of the growth in this school cannot continue. And we can't expect our kids to learn in an environment where the teachers are frazzled and frustrated, and chaos is ever-consuming, because they're working their tails off to make sure that it is as instructional and as committed and as, they are thoughtful in their day. But that can't continue. It can't. Because we sit here and we talk about, talk about having growth in academics for our students, and yet you're going to tell me that we're going to keep it this way is disrespectful to our teachers, for one, to say, oh, you can continue to work in that environment, you can handle it, just get them reading, get them some math, come on, people. Our teachers deserve better, and our students by far deserve an environment where they can learn in a proper environment, in an environment that is building them up to be great global citizens. And like I said, I don't think anyone that came in here, including Ms. Eaton, saw anything but the need for development in this school.
It was very eye-opening to be able to see it in person. I knew, I've talked to our teachers, but to be in the building during transition and see not just the facility constraints, but understanding more about what our teachers are going through, and they're working in their own silos of their subject matter. They don't have teams that truly understand the subjects that they're trying to teach, the, what they're trying to overcome with their students, and to build that collaboration and that network. And our teachers are getting dragged out. They need to be able to have teams in their subject matter areas so that they can continue to build our programs for the interest of our students.
Quick question, because I missed her name, the New Haven Science teacher.
Oh, Peyton Kugel.
Say the last name again.
Kugel, it's like Google, but with a C.
Okay. That's what I needed to help me remember that. The, so I mean, I've got, I've got a question, because I was in middle school myself, middle school math. You're in for science at New Haven?
Yep, only one.
Who do you talk to? Yourself?
I talk to my other middle school team, but they're all teaching like math, they're reading, they're social studies. Yeah, pretty much. So this is Ms. Tucker, she's behind.
Yeah, well, I was looking at, so, you know, we talk a lot of times about, what's the saying, you know, keep doing the same thing, but expect different results, that's the definition of insanity. I think it was 2016, 2015, I believe it was before you came on the board, Ms. Berry. So, and this conversation has reared its head over the past year, talking about that idea of, you know, trying to reconfigure, you know, New Haven and Boston, and it's probably before you arrived at New Haven School. I would even want to say, that was me that threw that question on the wall back in 2015-ish, give or take, in a work session that said, if we want to change types of opportunities for our students, if we want to change the results that we're getting, we have got to throw everything up there and figure out, you know, what might be the right thing. And part of what I talked about at that time was about at Boston School and about at New Haven, especially at the middle school level, that you are the science teacher, or someone else is the math teacher, and that there's no opportunity for collaboration with peers. In my years in the classroom, I always had other teachers, whether at the same grade level teaching math, or at the grade level above and below. And the ability to have those conversations within the building with peers teaching the same subject to either a line curriculum, to get help, I'm not getting this across. What am I doing that you're doing differently that I can learn from? You know, that, those types of conversations. And I think at the time, that question that was being posed about, if we really want to have improvements, we've got to start thinking about more than just leaving everything the same, got lost because it's scary. And, you know, listening to you as you were sharing, and there was a, and I forget who the member of the LPC was, you may know Ms. Bowlen, a former teacher from down at New Haven, I think reading, can't remember. There was one that was on the LPC, no longer at New Haven School, they were somewhere else in the district, I believe. But they talked to the same issue that you've just shared as well with us as a group. You know, I think this is one of those opportunities to, we're doing the right thing by you, for your students, doing the right thing for all students, is really what the LPC, and it sounds like what this, you know, group that, you know, Mr. Bierfeld introduced, and while it was just a small cross-section of people, I think it's some of the same thing we've heard from some of those other working groups as well. It's been those that are in the building, that are invested, that are saying, we can't just keep doing the same thing.
I do want to know, is Ms. Kugel also a Pride Award winner there, coincidentally? And I think the, the two science teachers sitting here next to each other, I do want to give them credit also, they do, they are very connected educators, but they're not connected necessarily in the building on a daily basis. And there is a sustainability issue where, when you're one of five teachers, you're asked to do things, lots of things, that does look different. It doesn't mean you can't have a great school with five teachers, you can. And you can have a great opportunity. And Boston Middle School and New Haven Middle School teachers work very hard and create great experiences for kids. So thank you, guys.
Yeah, that's a great point. That's not to mean the work that you're doing now isn't amazing, but we're sure changing you on what you could be doing.
I don't know if there are any other comments, or if, if not, or questions for Mr. Ward or Superintendent Bradley by the board members. If not, then there would need to be a motion to approve construction documents, BG2, BG3, and revised BG1, as has been presented.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Bowlen.
Okay. Gladly second.
Okay, so we did catch there at the very end, Mr. Dickerson, you said you would gladly second. Is that a thumbs up on the gladly second? Okay, I see the thumbs up. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, is that an aye for you, Mr. Dickerson?
Yes, sir.
Nope, that's okay. That's why I'm pausing to make sure that we, we end up including you there. So any names? So then motion passes 5-0. So you don't get off hook yet, Mr. Ward, because going on to 7E, the Thomas Nelson Community Campus Stages of Project.
Yeah, and I'll be quick with this one. It's really just a summary of the steps in the project and where it goes from here. We started, we first brought schematic design to you in June, we brought design development to you in September. Tonight, the work described in the blue box is the construction documents. What we will ask of you next, as a board action, is to allow us to put this out for bid. We will do that through November, receiving bids on the 9th of December, so that we can bring those bids to you at the December board meeting.
Question by any board member? Okay, so then we need a motion to authorize the construction manager to release the Thomas Nelson Community Campus Project for bidding.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Dickerson.
Second by Ms. Bowlen.
All in favor? Aye. Is that an aye from you, Mr. Dickerson? I wanted to make sure I heard what your vote was, an aye? He did make the motion. Okay. Okay. Any names? So then motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Ward, appreciate your time and your energy. Moving into 7F, next data dashboard, Mr. Martin?
We introduced the conversation in October's meeting. We're just coming back to that conversation. We wanted to be able to discuss the data dashboard a little bit at each meeting, because it's so important to our future conversation around student success.
Yeah, so this is just an update on the data dashboard process, really that's what I want to speak about today. These two questions continue to drive our work, and the data dashboard is going to continue to help us clarify these two things. I didn't think I could agree. Thank you. So, again, the dashboard space is live for us to view and for the public to view. The challenge teams, I'm going to speak about here in a minute, that will continue to drive that process, again, help us clarify questions that we want to ask, along with our current reality and metrics that we have to showcase. So just to begin, a couple of updates on the platform. We did add a couple of other data points for people to reference. We added ACT, this is just average ACT composite score that the juniors take each year in March, and what our schools, how they perform in relation to state average on that ACT test, and what that's looked like over time. So you can see, essentially, we've been right in line with state average on that ACT. During the COVID 2020, we did, we were a bit below there, but our participation rates were a lot higher than the state. Most of our kids took that assessment, whereas the state participation rate was lower. And then you can see, we're essentially back in line with state average. The bottom graph shows four-year graduation rate. This is something I think we could really celebrate, the word throughout our schools, but particularly at our high school level. And this past year, we had a four-year graduation rate north of 95%, which is well above state average. Signals that we're looking to explore soon are what percent of kids are in grade, engaged in extracurricular activity. We hope to have that data, just the baseline data to present in January. And then we're continuing to explore with our pride team, this notion of safety and wellbeing in kids, how they report on that, having baseline in January as well. So another process is to continue to create elements of local empowerment and local autonomy around this conversation. And so essentially, I am working with each school to identify a data lead that I will then work with at the school level, to get them to think through the same exact process, essentially. And by the 1st of January, the goal is that each school would have their own data dashboard to house that conversation around, again, what benefits do we want to offer, what questions are we exploring, and what metrics do we have to support that conversation? So this just talks about the process and what we're going through to make that come to life.
This is, this really, this conversation is a never-ending process. You know, we just know that by having a dashboard that's live, it allows us to come to terms with what is the data that must be gathered to determine success. KSA data, which we talked about in October, so the state testing data, well, it changes a little bit from here to here, is a part of that conversation, but it's not the only conversation. We also, I think, know that as we think about parents, when you ask parents, what benefits do you want for your child, they're, they are going to say, devoted to read, write, think, speak, right? Those things do matter. There's additional benefits that we also are looking to create, and this is where this dashboard comes to life. So this conversation translates to the challenge team conversation that we're going to summarize briefly as a team. And again, if you go to nelson.kyoboschool.us, you can see the live dashboard. That live dashboard right now is being updated, and by the week, some of its living data taken right out of the campus, it's right here, looks like this, you can click on it through your phone, visit it, and this is going to continue to be a conversation that drives some of the work going on.
Before you start, there's something you said, Mr. Martin, at the very beginning, talking about, this is not the only data, this data will be changed a little bit, the data points, the pieces of data that we're trying to collect. The only thing that I do hope is that eventually we kind of, we start to get settled on some level of consistency, not to say that it doesn't, you know, the pieces of data that we look at don't need to change over time, but always with data, the big fear is, and I think back to something Coach Hoynes either said or wrote, or I'm not sure, it was good, Coach, don't worry. I can't count how many times the state accountability system has changed in the past 30 years of care. I think you actually said the names of all the different assessment systems, or pretty much all of them. It's almost like we constantly change what the goalposts are. In fact, we change what the game we're playing is, and we don't just keep moving goalposts further along to try and get better achievement. It's, let's just change everything. So that's the only thing that I hope we do out of this, is that as we start to build this, as we start to find those extra pieces of data that become valuable, that we do start to maybe, I'll use the phrase calm a little bit, to where we've kind of settled on the pieces that we think are those true indicators.
Right, and we agree, and I think that's a process in order to get there. Just a fine example of that is Ms. Case and I met with assistant principals and counselors today, all the way from preschool to the 12th grade, really looking at, again, that safety, care, belonging, and kind of what things are we looking for. And our hope, I think, is to create more coherence among the schools, it's just going to take time in order to get there. We're saying a lot of similar things, but it's just a bit differently how we're framing those.
Sure, and it's not going to happen tomorrow. It's not going to happen in January. It is going to take some time. It's just, I am so tired of novice apprentice, proficient, distinguished, oh, wait a minute, let's change to stars now, oh, wait a minute, a couple more years, let's change to some dial that looks like a temperature gauge or something. And every time- And every time it changes, there are different pieces of data that get pulled that you cannot have any correlation across time. That's my only ask, is that let's get to that calm point at some point where we have some consistency in what we're looking for.
You ready? We're going to go fast. I've got a team on deck right here. Holly Smith, I think I'm using softball language, I don't know. You made me want to play a while ago, but I promise I'd strike out if it does. So, anyway, Alex did a really good job prepping the conversation for challenge teams. So a year ago, we introduced to you United We Learn, which was a vision document released by the Kentucky Department of Education. And basically, in that document, the department acknowledged, "We have been looking at assessment practices and accountability in really silo-type view and really playing around with the federal government says, here are the standards and here's how we're going to measure you." So KV acknowledged that there are other things that we need to be looking at in addition to our reading scores, our writing scores, and that really leads to the introduction of our next-gen challenge teams. And we're going to be bringing community members together, that being teachers, board members, employers, and we're really going to start exploring, what benefits do we want our schools to provide our students? So bringing people to the table to talk about what are the benefits and then how do we determine what success looks like and how are we going to measure that to feed that data dashboard that Alex was just referencing? So tonight, we're going to take some time to do a quick overview of these teams. We'll be convening this large group of people together on November 29th at Samuel Field Airport. We'll actually get to see a community classroom space that has been created due to community partnerships. So that's where the meeting will convene. So I'm going to start turning it over to the team. If you can go to the next slide, Mr. Bradley, I don't want you quicker. And we'll start introducing our five next-gen challenge teams.
So, we ask to those of you in the audience that want to be a part of these conversations, these are subgroups. So on the next-gen finance and operations team, the focus is how to provide the most opportunities for student success within the resources and revenue that we currently have. That includes three subgroups, a group focused on fiscal planning and tax rate, operational efficiency, and state legislation.
And our other challenge team is early childhood literacy and numeracy. And our challenge question is going to be centered around, "How can we partner with our families and students to ensure all students can effectively communicate and demonstrate grade-level literacy and numeracy?" So we're going to have three subteams. So we'll look at birth to three, early NC reading, and early NC math.
Our challenge team is next-generation professionals. Our overarching question is, "How can we engage Nelson County Schools team members more deeply with people, place, and purpose?" Our three focus areas are professional growth and development of our employees, employee engagement, and employer recruitment.
Hi there, I am working with the Student Safety and Wellbeing Next Gen Challenge Team, and I brought a friend with me that I'll introduce in just a moment. Our question is, "How can we ensure every student is engaged in their school community, is seen, heard, and valued?" And we will have three focus groups, Care and Connect Focus, a Mental Health Focus, and Safe Schools Focus, which is a nice introduction too. Mr. Richard Crowley, he is our Nelson County Schools SRO, SRO, meaning School Resource Officer. He comes to us from Columbus, Georgia, which like, why so far? But he has kiddos who live in New Haven, so still very invested in our community, particularly for that purpose. So I'll let you introduce yourself a little further.
Like you said, I'm Richard Crowley. I've got 26 years of long course of experience. I've been a police officer, probationary officer, parole officer. I've had five kids in my house before, I've got two in New Haven, they're eight and, I'm sorry, 10 and 12, going to be 13 in December. So I'm very invested in making sure that the entire school district is a safe environment for all our children.
Richard, just so you know, all of our board meetings are about three hours long, so if you don't, just make sure you set aside time for that on Tuesdays and Thursdays of each month.
So our next team is around student leadership and learning here, and we've got three subteams with learning, leadership pathways, and that's college and career, student opportunities and leadership, and community partners.
And through this team, we also want to make sure diverse learning is a priority, thinking through what is the effect of diverse learning on the student leadership and learning as well.
So we promised we'd make this quick. So we are very excited to bring teams together at the airport and start this conversation where we can really dive into the benefits and how we as a community determine what success looks like. So we encourage people to be a part of these, we're hoping every board member will be here, parents, students, and community members across the district. Do you all have any questions?
Would you be sending anything with more specifics about the 29th?
Yes, and I think some of you have already identified maybe a specific committee you'd like to be on, we would like to hear from you on which group you'd like to take part of. Just trying to make sure we keep board members across the committees so we have input from, input in all the different committees from the board.
These meetings have to be 50 minutes or less, and there could be popcorn and other, you know, engaging things that are part of this.
Hey, maybe a free flight if we're at the airport.
I forgot we do have the board calendar.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold. So moving on into item number eight, board calendar, Superintendent Bradley.
I think the main thing with the board calendar is knowing the board calendar can change at any time. We learned that my first year as superintendent, when we talked about the board calendar for 45 minutes, if I remember correctly. It was a rookie mistake on my behalf, not sharing the calendar enough in advance. Fortunately, you guys have had time to review this calendar. This can change at any time. I think a couple of key pieces is we are still in the communities and trying to maintain consistency of being in our schools, just like today. We also have some workshops, and I think workshops can be added as needed. As we know, these can be added, these are really, also we've added KSBA meetings to this conversation. Ms. Bowing has asked me more than once to acknowledge those as part of our board calendar and know that board members can connect and collaborate in those spaces and times is really important. There's two examples on here. And the only major shift is that these workshops are a week, one week apart currently that we've organized them. Part of that's just the nature of the conversations, and again, they can be changed. The other thing is June 13th was a shift in our board calendar. And it was June 20th through June 19th this year. Just to be frank, I'll be out of the country that following week, and I'm supposed to be at the meetings according to the board attorney, so I didn't think I'd be able to do that if I was in Canada fishing. So that's why the June 13th meeting was moved, just to be clear. Everything else can be changed, meeting times can be changed, but this is.
There's similarity, there's consistency from year to year or so. And as you said, if we needed to add meetings, we can, or if we need to change the date, we can. With that being said, if there aren't any questions, I would need a motion to approve the 2023 board annual calendar dates and locations as presented. Motion, my men? Oh, yes.
Thank you for adding the board retreat. I think it's important that we connect as a board and build our, as our board team and we unify our board. So I appreciate you guys adding that in, and I have been asking for more.
Great point. So I think I heard a motion from Ms. Berry. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Hollingshead. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five zero. We always leave this last item for board celebrations, maybe you all can indulge me, just one celebration. Coach Hoynes, stand up there, sir. It's not about you, okay? It's about a program. So as a parent, you've been thrilled the past couple of years with the way your son has performed as a cross-country athlete. And I think that even pales in comparison with what your program achieved a couple Fridays ago, correct?
Yeah, yeah, that's true. We had a young sophomore, worth noting, kid is out of district, pays tuition, they come to Thomas Nelson High School, I think that's pretty impactful. But yeah, won another state title. But the one to watch out for right here, I want to embarrass this guy a little bit. This is the, for most of the year, was the fastest seventh grader in the United States. He's had that strong move and got bumped to second, but yeah, watch out for this.
Well, Coach Hoynes, just wanted to congratulate you, your team, because, you know, that's probably a much sweeter state championship because you lost how many seniors, including one of the best cross-country athletes we've seen?
Yeah, yeah, Lane was pretty good and he put a lot of kids with him. So yeah, a big class, hello.
So that's kudos to you on your leadership.
I want to thank our Boston team for allowing us to use your space, but also for the continued dedication that you guys have for our students and the environment that you're given. And you guys are great. You know, I love you.
I just want to thank the Boston School for welcoming in during the day, during the chaotic time, so that I could see firsthand. I also want to thank all of the members of the Thomas Nelson team for the very thoughtful work that you have put in to get us to this state, and I really appreciate how thoughtful you all have been.
I have one. I'd like to repeat some lyrics that the children said when we started this meeting. "We're all on the same team." They said it over and over and over. Most of us are still acting like, so congratulations. Glad to be part of it. Glad to have been a part of it.
I make a moment.
Move to item number 10, turn. Motion by Ms. Berry to adjourn. Need a second? Second by Ms. Hollingshead, all in favor?